Good evening. The Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting of Tuesday, September 2nd is called to order. Alice Kelly, Chair.
Mike Canata.
Andrew Holt, Alternate.
John Comtoys, Alternate.
Anne Grasso.
Nick Demetriades.
Vincenzo Marfella.
Dr. John Osby.
Okay, and I would, at this time, I would also like to ask that we would seat the Alternates, please.
I'll make a motion to seat our two Alternates.
All in favor?
Aye.
And also with us tonight, we have our zoning enforcement officer, Bruce Driscoll, our town planner, Stuart Popper, and Linda Emmy, our clerk, and
James Suspect.
I saw somebody, yes. James Demetrius from the council, and he will report back to the council about this meeting. Anybody else from the town? Okay, moving on. Mr. Popper?
I have one application to the agenda under new business.
Okay.
I'd like to add application number twenty-five, twenty-six, and that's one fifty Sabethy Drive, and that's a special permit for an application for a liquor permit.
This was the driving range?
Yeah, yeah, the restaurant is the driving range.
Okay. And when would you like that to be?
I'd like to schedule it for our next meeting, it's all posted today, so we'll schedule it for our meeting on September sixteenth.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend our agenda to include acceptance, schedule, application twenty-five, twenty-six, one fifty Sabethy Drive for liquor permits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and it's going to be on September sixteenth?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Public comments at this time, or on anything that is not on public hearings? Moving on. Okay, Mr. Driscoll?
Good evening. You have in your packet, I think on page two or three, a spreadsheet which shows some of the activity, and you also have a memorandum which I passed out this evening. You also have, which is dated today, which shows a little bit more of a crystal clear look of what some of the activities involve. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them or address any of the items on there.
Okay. I was just at, you know, Kirby Road, log grinding. That's, you can do log grinding?
They did a site clearing, yes.
Oh, okay.
And it came out beautiful, by the way. I took a ride down there, I couldn't believe it's the same piece of property. I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah, very, very developable now, isn't it?
Oh, God, it's, it's actually an eye-opener, what they turned that into, it's beautiful.
And then, keeping livestock on, on a undersized lot?
He had too many heads of cattle on too small of a lot, per our regulations, so
Oh, okay.
he was able to reduce the number and now is in compliance.
Okay, okay.
Thus the check mark for compliance.
Okay.
Bruce, I've got a question.
Yes.
I was at Crown Battery a few days ago, which is kind of behind where the cable company is keeping all their trucks, and they were supposed to put nets up on the back of the driving range, and I'm at Crown Battery, and literally, a golf ball goes flying by. You can't make this stuff up.
They did put nets up as recently as this summer, I believe, last month.
Okay, when I was there yesterday, or not yesterday, was two, Wednesday of last week, and I had thought that we had said the nets needed to be across the back and up the side a little bit to protect the adjacent properties, and I'm not seeing the nets that I thought we were supposed to be, be seen.
So the nets are the south of the driving range?
Yes, before the driving range, you're coming up Sabethy, it's on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
On that side where the
Where the miniature golf used to be.
Correct.
I thought that they were supposed to be wrapping that side with nets. I, I, I'm doing it from memory, so I don't know.
No, I think you're, you are right, but they did add nets this summer.
Okay, I didn't see the nets that, but I did see the golf ball come bouncing by.
So, when were you there?
Like Wednesday or Tuesday of last week.
We'll take a look at it.
Take, take a look, you know where Crown Battery is?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Basically, I was on the side of their building, backed up to their loading dock, loading batteries, and in the field, just to the left of their loading dock. It, I mean, there's a bunch of golf balls out there as well. So, that's where I thought the net was supposed to go. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, this is very informative about, you know, things and how they're being handled. Anybody would like to discuss the memo? If not, moving on.
We've got the medical office building, which will be opening up later this month, we're very excited about that. Very exciting to have Middlesex Hospital come to Cromwell. We are having discussions about other properties. I'm sure everybody's seen the Cromwell Chicken is under construction.
Yes, it is.
And moving along, so everybody's excited about that. So, those are some
And the grocery store?
They're moving along. The Mediterranean, the Mediterranean Grocery Store, and the old Aaron's Furniture Store, that's moving along.
Yes, they have all their windows up and things like that, I happened to go to UPS.
Yeah, yeah, so we're very excited about that, so that we'll see them this fall, we'll see the medical office building this fall, and those are some of the things going on, we're having discussions about other properties. We have not seen any applications yet, but there are, are things being discussed at this point. I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything special?
Anybody?
Any activity on the land behind Sanoco?
Yeah, there are people looking at that.
That, that's still
Yeah, there are people, I mean, it's, it's under, it's under extensive discussion, we've met with the potential developers several times over the summer,
Great.
and they're kicking around different ideas.
Great, okay, thank you.
I mean, the, 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 there, there is a developer that has an option on the property, and their option, so they, they are moving forward, trying to acquire a tenant for the property. So obviously, they're not going to do a build, spec building. Nobody's building spec buildings anymore, so
Well, that's ancient history.
Yeah, those days are long gone, so so it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what we do get there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or anything? Okay, moving on then. New business?
So we have application twenty-five dash twenty-four, which is an application for a special permit for towing and storage of cars at one thirty Berlin Road, this is the old Bishop's Garage.
Wait a minute, though, don't we have under here, under new business, the release of a bond?
But this is before it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is number eight, the release of the bond is number nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I skipped right over it.
So, so this is the old Bishop Towing, so this is a special permit. They want to operate their, Bishop is going to lease out the property to somebody that's going to operate their towing and storage facility there. They're going to use the existing enclosed area, but they need to do a lot of work on their plans, they need to show grading, they need to show what they're going to do for drainage back there, and a lot of other things. So, we're, we're in the process of reviewing the plans, and we're asking the commission to accept the application and schedule it to be heard at the first meeting in October.
Motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept and schedule application twenty-five dash twenty-four for the first meeting in October, which is, I don't have a calendar.
That's all right.
October seventh.
And that would be a public hearing?
Public hearing, it's a special permit, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have application twenty-five, twenty-six, which is an application for a special permit, basically a liquor permit at the old Torres restaurant at one fifty Sabethy Drive. So I'd ask you to accept that this evening and schedule that to be heard on September sixteenth.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept and schedule twenty-five, twenty-six, one fifty Sabethy Drive to be heard on September sixteenth.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we have new business, we have, I'll let Bruce address that, it's the release of the bond.
So all the site plan features which this commission had reviewed and approved for the business at Berlin Road for Chris Cannabis have been met, and I recommend the release of the bond in the amount of six thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars plus interest.
Motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to release the Chris Cannabis Bond in the amount of six thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars per staff approval.
Plus interest.
Plus interest.
Okay, second on that, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, public hearings, Mr. Popper. Oh, I'll read it, I No, Nicholas. You're the secretary.
You're up at bat. Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission, legal notice, the Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, the Town Council Chambers of the Cromwell Town Hall at forty-one West Street, on the following items. One, application number twenty-five dash sixteen, application to amend the special permit under section four point four C, Town of Cromwell zoning regulations, to allow for an outside patio at Murphy's Pub and Sports Bar at fifty-one dash fourteen Shunpike Road. The applicant is K.C. Hancock, and the owner is HBN dash CSC LLC. Two, application number twenty-five eighteen, application for special permit under section four of the Town of Cromwell zoning regulations to allow for a caretaker's quarters at nine hundred Corporate Row. The applicant is Samuel Slavinsky, and the owner is Industries Inc. REV. Number three, application number twenty-five dash nineteen, application to amend the zoning regulations to add banquet hall as a permitted use under section four point three point G, and amend section two point two of the regulations to add a definition of banquet hall. The applicant is Ukrainian American Cultural Center of Connecticut. At this hearing, interested parties may appear and be heard and written testimony received. The applications are available for public inspection in the Office of the Planning and Zoning and the Planning and Development. Alice Kelly, chairperson dated in Cromwell, Connecticut, this, the twenty-eighth day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Now, I, I apologize, that, that is the, that is not the correct legal notice that was in the paper. There was no application number two, and the correct legal notice listing or the public hearings listed on the agenda. So, there was application twenty-five dash fourteen, which is a continuation from our last meeting, which is an application for a special permit under section five point six of the Town of Cromwell zoning regulations to allow for filling, grading, and removal of earth materials at nine Winchester Way. The applicant is Edward Pergalati, and the owners are Dennis, Denise Lightfoot and Edward Pergalati. Number two was the application to amend the zoning regulations to allow for the banquet hall, and the third one is application twenty-five sixteen, which is the application to amend the special permit at Murphy's Sports Bar. So I, I apologize for the confusion. And the order that we're going to do those in is the order they appear in, on the, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay.
And that would be nine, that would be nine Winchester Way would be the first one.
Right, so we need, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to open the public hearing for application twenty-five fourteen.
And you're the second.
Everybody in favor?
Yeah, all in favor, aye. She needs some help, she's putting up the
Are you plugged in?
Yeah, we have, we have to change, it's okay.
There you go.
Okay, we have to focus this way.
Yeah, we can't get that too
Good evening, Gord. Before I start reading this, we're going to hand out prints, so you guys have all those, and just to see. We have them up on the, we'll have them on the screen too, as we go. But we approach and hand those out.
Yeah, good evening, my name is John Mack from Stewart Summers Company, and I prepared the plans.
Well, I think We have smaller plants, this is?
I have a full-size, three of, three of them, I'm just going to
Well, you should be able to put them up on this?
Um, well
Yeah, we have, I have one that's going to go up as well.
Okay.
Okay, then that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Gord. The project overview is the site plan for the special permit for removal of down trees and fill that was pushed onto Town of Cromwell, behind the property line at nine Winchester Way. This also includes the re-grading and fill that was brought into the backyard of nine Winchester Way.
Over, you're right, over here. I'm, wherever. This is these.
Yes.
So, as you can see on this slot, this slide, it describes the property, it's an R twenty-five, a little bit more than a third of an acre. You could see it pretty well blown up to where the wetlands setback is of that red line, and then you see the green dotted line where we encroach the town property.
Wow.
So, these are the pictures from our backyard. The one on the left is from our backyard. The one on the bottom right is also from our backyard, but the one on the top right is on the Town of Cromwell side. So you could see, it does go over about probably thirty to forty feet, but it's cantilevered onto a tree, so there's not much fill or down trees once it's past that area. But it is probably about sixteen hundred square feet, forty by forty. So, erosion control measures, a pre-construction meeting will be held with appropriate Town of Cromwell staff, property owner and contractors. A temporary silt fence will be installed prior to any site disturbance surrounding the work area approximately forty length from the back of the property line at nine Winchester Way, and the width of about forty feet. Additional sediment and erosion control measures will be implemented as necessary. Property pins will be placed at the rear corners of the property by the firm that has completed the property survey. Any questions so far on any of this?
No, just keep going.
Okay. All right, so the removal and the disposal. All down trees in the open space will be removed via hand if possible. If not, a small excavator will be placed in the rear of nine Winchester Way. All trees and brush recovered will be removed from the site by a contractor. Lastly, all fill material with any other smaller materials will be removed by hand. All work mentioned above will, sorry, I can't even read that, be done by a licensed and insured contractor. A COI for the contractor has already been provided to the Town of Cromwell, listing the Town of Cromwell as an additional insured. And on this diagram, that's the property line between seven Winchester Way and nine Winchester Way, and that's the area it will be coming out, and there's a picture on the next slide that shows you the area it's going to be coming out of. All right, so seeding planting requirements, seed bed preparation includes grading, applying limestone and fertilizer, and seeding with special grass mixtures, mulching and a minimum of five inches of topsoil application are required for stabilization, and that will just be in accordance to our, what we have written on the plans. Completed work, once all work is completed and looked at and been approved by Town of Cromwell personnel, the contractor shall take all erosion measures such as adding silt fences around the entirety of the sides and rear of the property to ensure that no runoff of soil to any neighboring properties. Regrading. A permit of the regrading of the fill pile will be obtained if deemed necessary by the Town of Cromwell Building Department. All work will meet general grading standards that are stated in Appendix J of the Connecticut Building Code. The existing block retaining wall and basketball court will be removed. All drainage will just be extended to keep natural runoff and not affect any neighboring properties. All work will be performed by a licensed contractor. In this diagram, you could see, kind of on the bottom right, there's, I don't have a laser pointer, I'm sorry, but there's a shed on there right now, so that basketball court will no longer be there. And then to, to the right of it, there's a retaining wall that's going to be taken down as well. And then the area where it says existing fill in area to be regraded, that's the picture that was shown last time during our meeting, that will be taken down and graded gradually across the yard. So, I forgot we had this picture. So, that's the shed in that retaining wall, the shed will be replaced where it was, the retaining wall will be coming down, and where that little dump is on that little hill over there will be, that's going to all be graded down and sloped down. Retaining wall and drainage. Retaining wall and drainage will abut the property at eleven Winchester Way and open space that is owned by the Town of Cromwell. An application for a permit hasn't been submitted yet. As I was doing this, I thought it already had been submitted, but I know they called today for this work, and all drawings and specifications will be delivered to the Town of Cromwell by our licensed building inspector. Contractor, sorry. Fencing. Fencing will be placed along the side and rear of the property at nine Winchester Way. The fence will connect to the existing fence that abuts eleven Winchester Way, go around the rear yard and adjoin the fence on the property line at seven Winchester Way. All the work's being performed by a licensed contractor. On this one, you could see the yellow highlighted, that's where the fence is going to continue along the side and come down. And that is it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Pergalati, you are aware that the information that you presented is going to require license from a finance department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did see some of the notes as well about the bonding and stuff like that, whatever you guys deem reasonable, yes, we are aware of that.
Just to be clear, for the record, that is before anything is, any activity occurs out there?
Oh, yes, yeah.
No removal, no regrading?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question for you, because I'm reading, did you get Mr. Harriman's memo?
Yes, I did.
And I'm just wondering, because he said it's his understanding that some of the work shown on the plan has already occurred.
No. That said that on his?
His memo has
Occurred, it says occurred.
Has occurred.
In John's memo, it says it's already occurred.
What does that mean?
It's already happened.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, this was a violation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I violated, yeah.
Oh, all right.
We put the fill on before we asked for the
All right, so I just wanted
Yeah, okay.
The work that's occurred was the violation.
Right, was a violation, okay, I was just, as he's bringing up different things, I thought maybe some of this work they're talking about now has already occurred.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So you haven't started any of the
No, I mean, besides, I mean, you saw on that picture, we don't have a shed right now. So we did buy a seven by seven resin shed and put in the backyard, but no regrading, we haven't touched that at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Okay. Anybody want to speak, or do you want to wait and have public come first?
Let's, let, here with the public.
Anybody here at the public that wishes to comment on this application? You can come forward now, you have any comments? Okay. So any, do you have anything to say?
Any, no, any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Any comments?
You have John's memo?
Yes.
This is memo attached to that. If the commission were to act favorably this evening on this application, it would be the conditions contained in both houses.
Yeah, so I have a letter dated from August twenty-ninth, I have a letter from John Egan of August twenty-seventh, and I have a letter from John Harriman of September second. And the only other condition that I would recommend that doesn't always happen is that the removal of the silt fence should be looked at by Bruce before it's removed. But it should be a condition that the silt fencing, the silt fencing, et cetera, should be part of the remove, part of this finishing process. So often, there's been projects where the silt fence sits there, and five years later, you drive by and you see the weeds that are three feet high covering the silt fence that's two feet high. So that would be the only recommendation I would make, other than what's already been recommended by staff. Anybody else?
Anybody else? Okay, then, you need to, motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the memo dates for me real quick?
Sure. I have a letter from John Harriman dated nine two. I have a letter from John Egan dated eight twenty-seven. And I have a letter from Bruce Driscoll dated eight twenty-nine.
In, in our packet, I also had a letter from Bruce for July tenth, was that updated? And I just didn't get an updated copy?
I believe that memo was referenced in my August twenty-ninth.
Yeah, the eight twenty-nine is the latest memo. Yep, following prior review dated June thirteenth, and okay, so I believe it's covered. Anybody else?
Hold on, wait a minute. And I think there was one that you did for June thirteenth. Nine Winchester Way. Right.
Yeah, they're both noted in
They're both noted in, in the August twenty-ninth memo.
Okay, yep. Okay. If not, I'm going to have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we need a motion to move ahead?
So, is everyone okay with approval? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve application, give me a second here.
Twenty-five fourteen.
Twenty?
Twenty-five fourteen.
Yep, twenty-five fourteen. With the following conditions, that the letters of John Egan dated August twenty-seventh, John Harriman dated September second, and Bruce Driscoll dated August twenty-ninth be adhered to, as well as, at the conclusion of the project, removal of the silt fence be accomplished by the homeowner after inspection by Bruce Driscoll.
Okay, is that fine, Mr. Popper? Okay. Okay, I'd like to have a, a second for that, please?
Finney, Finney second.
Well, I guess, whatever, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
You got some work to do, good luck.
Good luck. Okay, Mr. Popper? Right.
Next is application number twenty-five nineteen, which is an application to amend the zoning regulations to add banquet halls as permitted use under section four point three G of the Cromwell zoning regulations, and amend section two point two of the regulations to add a definition of banquet hall. The applicant is the Ukrainian American Cultural Center of Connecticut.
Stuart, thank you. Hi, good evening.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So everybody's received copies of the information that was submitted, the proposal that was submitted to amend the zoning regulations, everybody's got a copy of that, it was included in the packet. I would just like to, to ask people and inform everyone that, you know, this application would impact property which is located within five hundred feet of Rocky Hill, and is located within five hundred feet of Hill. Therefore, we were required to submit this application to both the River Cog, which is the regional river council of governments, and the Capitol Region Council of Governments. So they have a certain amount of time to respond, we have not gotten a response to it yet, so whatever happens this evening, we're going to ask that the public hearing be continued until the next meeting. I don't expect anything, I've never seen any negative comments come back from, from River Cog or Croc. This is a statutory procedure that we have to So
So we would just then
So we're going to, whatever happens tonight, we're going to continue, I'm going to ask you to continue the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So just, so we begin that with an open call.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for that, thank you, Stuart. I'm Kimberly Evans, and I'm counsel for the Ukrainian
Do you want to put it up closer to you? Thank you.
Okay, good.
Oh.
Good, okay. So you all have the proposed amendment? That includes adding this new definition for That includes adding this new definition for banquet halls for the industrial zone? Everybody has that?
Yes.
Terrific.
Thank you.
So, again, we're asking just for this amendment so that the, so that, so that our fraternal organization can also be able to use the facility for other kind of small gatherings, weddings, parties. It would be limited especially by the number of parking spaces we have available. We're extremely cognizant about the noise control. This is a way for us, in order to generate revenue, to support paying for the facility to cover the, the cost of it. So, I went through this with Stuart. Everybody has the proposed text of the amendment. So we're just asking to add this definition for banquet hall facility? Does anyone have questions?
Mr. Popper, you reviewed the draft text?
Yes, I don't know if you have any questions?
Do we need to tie some type of square footage to the sides of the banquet hall, or how do we? Because it's a special permit, is that something we can self-regulate?
Because it's a special permit, it gives us a lot of discretion. So we can limit the hours of operation. We could decide whether or not, because it's a special permit, if it's suitable for the neighborhood, if it's an appropriate use for the building. So it gives us, gives us all that flexibility. I, I can't imagine anybody coming in with, with, you know, one, there are just not that many buildings in the industrial zone you could do this with. Their, their building is one of the few buildings that you could. Because it already operates as that type of facility.
Right.
You know, they, I mean, they basically operate a banquet hall for their members. Okay, so they already have that facility there. So, it's not like they're, they're proposing to build. But by doing this, what it would allow them to do, you know, so you have to understand, they, they have a special permit to operate, you know, a bar, they have a special permit to operate the club. Okay? So, what this would allow them to do is, since they already have the facility, they already have the bar, they already have the, the hall, so to speak. That, this would allow them legally to rent that hall out for other events. So now, now how it operates, if I'm a member of the Ukrainian club and I wanna have my daughter's wedding there, I can do that.
Exactly.
Okay? Now, I'm not a member, and I know my friend Frank is a member, and I call my friend Frank up and say, look, we're having, we're having a, you know, fiftieth wedding anniversary party, and we're wondering, you know, what do you guys charge for the hall?
Right.
So Frank couldn't do that.
Right.
Okay, because Frank's not a member.
Exactly.
And that would be a commercial use of the club building, okay? This is a club building.
Thank you.
So now, if, if this regulation was approved, and obviously, I mean, it's, it's, you know, like all regulation amendments, it's, it's self dri, it's self-interest, and that's fine. But, so if it's approved, then Frank could have his fiftieth anniversary party there, okay? That's really the only thing that you're gonna see different at that facility. Now, as, as we made, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, 'cause I also think it would be true if Frank were a member of a different fraternal organization, like the National Polish Association.
Right, we all agreed to that. Yeah, we agreed to that before. But I, I think that in regards to looking at other facilities, so, an example might be, somebody decides they wanna build a hotel in the business industrial park zone on the land behind the Sunoco. Okay? And as part of that hotel, they wanna have a banquet facility. So that's in the business park zone. And that would, that, that would do both here. So, I think that's, that's kinda what we're looking at here.
Yes.
So, be in the business park?
But that's why I asked about the square footage. I'm not concerned about what is built. I'm concerned about what isn't built yet.
Right.
And whether or not, on a application by application basis, we can choose if we feel something is too large or too, too small, doesn't really matter.
Yeah, yeah.
But too large, not fitting in, not compatible with what's around it.
Well, I think with the language within a special permit allows us to do that.
Perfect, then I'm, then I'm good with it. Thank you.
So, let me just ask a little bit further than that, because you're saying is, you know, around there, you know, I mean, we don't have a banquet hall really in Cromwell right now.
Right.
At all, and now this can fit into any industrial zone? And is it called business industrial or business zone?
We're talking about the industrial.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, we're talking about the industrial zone, we're saying that you, we would allow banquet hall facilities in the industrial zone.
Only?
Only.
And that isn't the one by Sunoco, that's not an industrial zone, is it?
No, that's a business park zone.
Oh, okay, because when you said that, that's right. Okay, so then, I'm just saying is so that somebody then could build in, there's open space in the industrial zone, so they could come in and they could put in, for whatever reason, God only knows, they could put in a huge banquet hall.
Yeah, if they got approval of a special permit, it's not like they can do it in a matter of-
Well, no, I'm just saying, okay, right.
Right, so they'd have to come before us.
They'd have to come before us, and you'd also have to have parking for that huge banquet hall.
Right. And then, when, but when you say-
If you have over two hundred spaces, you'll have to remember that you're located off a state highway, which means if you have more than two hundred spaces, you're gonna also be getting a permit from the state traffic authority.
You're gonna have to get an OSTA permit.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they used to come.
Why, if you're, if you're not on a highway, you have to?
Yeah, if you, if you have-
If you're on a state highway.
If you're, if you're on a road that feeds into a state highway, then that triggers their review, yeah, yeah.
Like Seth Lee Driver said. No, I'm, I'm just asking these-
No, it's fine.
Different questions as far as, because I just feel that this text is very loosey.
Well, if you have suggestions for how you wanna-
Well, no, I just, that's why I was asking, because in here, it also said, in here, parking. Parking shall be provided in accordance with section, nothing.
That's my mistake, I should've filled that in for them.
Mine, Stuart, I'm sorry.
And it should refer back to what we require for all type of facilities like that, so we'll fix that.
Designated loading and service area shall be identified on the site plan.
Right.
Oh, okay, no, I was just looking at different things.
No, so we'll have the parking, we'll get the parking number of that.
And then compatibility, that the use is compatible with permit, permitted and existing industrial uses.
Right.
How is a banquet hall compatible?
Well, it's gonna be up to the commission to decide.
No, but I'm just reading this.
Right.
That the use is compatible.
I think if you think about the times when events would be occurring-
With permitted and existing industrial uses. I mean, I'm just being the devil's advocate, 'cause I'm saying is, I don't see anything in industrial zone that is compatible with, you know, you have businesses, like, you know, really, and a banquet hall, to me, is recreational business.
Well, you have to understand that when you have large industrial buil, when you have large buildings, you know, they're used for a variety of uses. And when you talk about general language, like things like compatible, you could mean, for example, you're next to a building that operates primarily first shift. So all the buildings, if you, if you think about it, all the buildings on Commerce Drive operate primarily as first shift. There's no, you know, there's no facility there that's running a third shift operation. There's no construction, it's not, you're not on County Line Drive with the Amazon Building. Okay, which basically runs twenty-four seven. So, you're, you're in an area, so if you imagine the other industrial areas in town, you know, what, how, when you talk about compatibility, in my mind, you're thinking, well, is the use gonna be compatible? Because the use next door is, you know, if you're running a factory and you're running three shifts a day, and, you know, it, it might not be compatible, there might not be enough parking, you know, it, it all, things like that could come up.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure that-
But a special permit gives us the ability to look at all that and act accordingly.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're on safe ground.
Yeah, I thi, I think the special permit, so, so, you know, the special permit, you know, we would have the ability to say, look, we don't think, you know, traditionally, if you look at it today, most, most wedding venues and places like that usually close or stop the event at eleven. And they do that for sound reasons, basically. And they also do that because the people staffing the event, you know, it's as many hours as they're gonna work. They're not, you know, they'll work from six to eleven, they don't really wanna run the operation from six to twelve. So, we would have the ability during the special permit process, you know, we could decide, you know what, we think it should close at eleven. So we could say, your event, whatever, whatever hall, if it's the Ukrainian club, if it's the former Krematory, okay, whatever you're doing there, it has to be over at eleven.
Okay, I'm just, you know.
So I mean, so we, within the confines or the context of the special permit, we would have the ability to do that. So I think, I think overall, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a use where people can kinda take advantage of things that they already have, and where, it's a use where there's some potential.
Okay.
Do we have a lot of places that people are gonna do this? I really kinda doubt it.
I can't.
I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, it's not gonna be the Knights of Columbus. I know those, those days are long gone.
They shall never happen again.
They'll never happen again. And we, we can control it from day one. Nobody had any control over the Knights of Columbus.
Right, they were double grandfathered.
Yeah.
Anybody else, please? Yes, go ahead, yes.
In the definition, it says the eventually limited to hours of eight to twelve unless otherwise approved by the commission. Does that limit us from limiting the hours to before twelve under the special permit review? Would we be tying our hands for a future permit?
Well, it could be, because it, it says here, event shall be, that's mandatory, shall.
So maybe we wanna make it a little more vague to give ourselves more power in the future?
Do you wanna say that the timing of the events is at the discretion of the committee? Would that help?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest something like events shall be limited to the hours specified by, approved by the commission.
Yeah, I would, I would be more-
Better language, I got you.
Just get rid of that.
Yep.
Yep.
Would that address your concern then? Anybody else?
Anybody else? Yes.
So, Stuart, when we look at the table and you're saying add banquet hall to the table, would that be, would that be in the category of community and cultural facilities? Or is that gonna be a separate banquet hall, a separate category in and of itself? And then, in either event, as you look down the row, not the column, but the row, would it, would it be checkbox under business and industrial? How's this gonna look in the table?
I wouldn't put it under that category.
Okay.
Because those are more, I would put it under, it's, it's not gonna be under those categories.
Okay.
I would actually put it under a different category and-
Would it be a separate category, banquet hall?
Yeah, I, I would think so, and I would go, let me just go to the use table for a second.
Yep. It's on page eighty-one, I think, if I have the right version of this.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't use that. What I would use basically is food and beverage services.
Okay.
Because if you think about this, that's what this is.
Okay.
This is a facility for food and beverages.
Okay.
So, we would add a category, you know, so if you look at it, we have food and beverage services. We have a broad range of categories. So I would add, you know, banquet hall, you know, it starts on page eighty-three, and it says, food and beverage services. So I would under, add it under that category, and it would be under industrial as a special permit.
Okay.
So that's how it would look. It would look, if you look on page eighty-four, you can see it.
This is my attempt to put the table in the document, it was not successful.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
It's fine, no, no, it's fine.
So that's how, 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 and what I'll do is I'll, we'll reproduce that table and we'll get it to everybody so you can see it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, and it'll only be, basically, a checkbox will only be under that one industrial category.
Yes, yeah.
Is, so since we're talking about that, would there, would there be any other categories since we're, we opened the, the door here that possibly a banquet hall could fit in, maybe for future considerations? Or do we wanna just limit it to this for now and leave it at that until we have another application? I mean, banquet hall could be used in other areas, but I'm, I don't know, I'm just kinda throwing it out on the table that if we're doing it now, do we wanna kind of forecast the possibility of banquet halls in other areas? But it doesn't have to, I mean, we can start with this and work our way out.
Well, I think what we could do, I mean, we could, we could say, I mean, basically, we only have two air, two zones at this point in time. I mean, the other zone where it could possibly be is the business industrial park zone.
Right.
So, and basically, you know, for example, that's the area behind the Sunoco. And the area adjacent to the Middlesex Hospital Building. That's also the area off of Gear Street, which goes from, almost, almost goes from ninety-nine all the way to Route Three. So that's all the, that's all the business industrial parks.
But I, what I did is-
And it's, it's possible that somebody could build a hotel. And if they build a hotel, I mean, you know, the, the hotels we have right now really don't have, I mean, if you've been in the Marriott, I mean, that's probably the largest one. You know, the other, the other existing hotel doesn't really, the Spring, the Spring, Spring Hill.
Spring Hill Suites.
Yeah, they, they don't have a banquet facility, they've got a little dining area. And really, if you think about it, the Marriott doesn't have a banquet facility. They've got a large room that they kinda passes for where they do their events, but it's not really-
So you're looking at it under food and beverage services?
Yes, yeah, that's where I would put it.
All right, we, I mean, we could leave it as, with, with the industrial for now, and, and let's see where that new property with the red line, would that, you know, where that's going? Would that need anything to that extent? There's no banquet halls in that at this point?
And I expect, I expect, the people that are looking at the Sunoco property, if they move forward, they're gonna probably move forward with a use that might not be currently in the zoning rights, that they would come in and ask to amend. And if they wanna build a hotel there in addition to those other uses, they'd be fine, they can do it then.
So then, okay, that's fine, that's fine. And then, just a general question, so I, I've been a long time since I've rented a hall, so if you have a liquor permit, and I know maybe this is out of the, but if you have a liquor permit, they have a liquor permit, and I rent the hall, do I get the use of that liquor permit too?
I, I, I-
I don't, they have to have for a le, a separate liquor license, right? If, if I go in to have an event and I have liquor served, again, maybe not in our bailiwick, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I, I could look into it, I don't, I don't know.
No, it's not, I was just-
If the hall has a permit-
They could, they could take advantage of that.
Then you rent the hall from the-
You get the benefit of that license.
And you get the benefit of the permit as well.
Again, more of a curiosity.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm pretty positive that you get the benefit.
I remember it that way, but I don't recall.
Okay, yes, yes.
So, there, there might be different stipulations on that now. You would have to check with Liquor Commission? 'Cause I know in the past, if a facility has a liquor permit, you cannot bring your own liquor. So, because the, the thing is, if something happens, they're gonna be responsible. So it's, it's some kind of fee that the person will have to take with the state. So it's, it's all through Liquor Commission.
Yep. I would just add too, that this is a period of time when, like, the Ukrainian culture is under assault. We would, this is much appreciated to help us generate the revenue to support the, the club.
Yes, go ahead.
This is, this is a curious question.
Sure.
How many people fit in your banquet hall?
Excellent question, I'm glad I have my experts here, how many people?
Everybody, do you have your mics on? Because they said they couldn't hear.
Sorry, one sixty?
The IT person said they couldn't hear, so put it down so, and he came to me and said-
What was that number?
One sixty?
One sixty?
Zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to open up to the public.
Okay. Anybody would like to come before us on this?
Public comment?
Public comment?
Good evening, James Dimitriatus, two seventy-two Skyview Drive. I just wanna say that I think since we've lost to the Crown Plaza slash Red Lion in town, there's definitely been a struggle to have a mid-sized banquet facility that's accessible to a lot of the groups in town. The only option right now, if you wanna have like a large event, would be the TPC River Highlands, which is quite expensive for the, for the space that they have. So I think having a, another flexible banquet hall facility in town that may be more accessible would be something that a lot of the civic groups in town would certainly appreciate. I, I know that when the development on West Street was going in, and they were talking about having some commercial portion to that original project when it was owned by Lexington, we had asked, and I know your commission had also asked about the opportunity to have a banquet hall space for a hundred to a hundred and fifty people, and they said that that's not something that they're interested in. So there's really a, a lack of adequate space for that type of event, and given our location in the crossroads of two major highways in the center of the state, something like this is, is very desperately needed. When Knights of Columbus was on Main Street, they would have events for soccer groups in this league and that league all the time because it was just such an adequate space, it was accessible, it was one level, it was all of those things. You know, that there aren't in many other again, sites, I guess Cafe Fiori has a, a small room in the back, but I would say that holds seventy-five comfortably, not a hundred and fifty comfortably. And Cafe Luna as well, but that's another space that holds seven, you know, seventy-five to fifty, probably more for an anniversary or a dinner versus a banquet. So I, I think that this is a definite need, and I think the location of it is also really viable because it is far away from any residents where the, they're located, especially since it's through a special permit. There's not a house within stone's throw of it, and there's woods abutting on the other side across the street that would muffle any sound. So I think all in-